Uh, no.
No.
Uh, take someone's identity, uh, usually on the internet, and, uh, do something to make their identity look worse.
I don't know what DOCS means.
I do not.
It means to get someone's personal information specifically where they live from online.
DOCS, not exactly, no.
Usually I only spend a couple hours on my phone, maybe like three or so.
Never share personal information.
Don't read comments. You can't control what people say, so it's better to ignore the hate.
Kids just wanna connect and talk.
I spent thirty hours a week on my phone last time I checked.
I see my dad on his phone all day at home.
When my mom was driving me to school, we got hit because a girl was on her phone.
Adults need to understand that kids are living in a different world.
Pay attention.
Good morning, everybody, and welcome to our Wednesday board session. It is Wednesday, February first, twenty twenty-three. It's nine o'clock, and we're here in the center hearing room. As always, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you'd please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And we do have, uh, somebody signed up for public comment. Ronald Sturba? If you wanna come right over here, uh, and then introduce yourself for the record, uh, and then let us hear what, uh, what's on your mind.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ronald Sturba, five hundred twentieth Street Northeast, Salem. I am a board member with Simpka Neighborhood Association. That's Southeast Mill Creek Association. I'm here to talk about safety concern for our neighbors in a, what I see as a isolated community. This community is, uh, just east or south of Highway twenty-two between Corden Road and Lancaster. And it wraps around in a circle of roads. These roads isolate the community from Miller Elementary School and Huck Middle School. Parents want an easy way to access the elementary school for their children. Right now, they have to go around Lancaster to Ricky and in. I have a proposal here that came to me as, uh, neighbors said, "We need a safe route to school." And I, I said, "Well, let's go ahead." So I have paperwork here, uh, the pictures of the isolated community. Also, I had a architect came up to me and said, "You know, the bridge, Lancaster Bridge over Highway twenty-two, Corden Road Bridge over Highway twenty-two, and Gaffin Road, which is Highway twenty-two, over Gaffin Road, is not safe in case there's a earthquake." And I went, "Really?" Then this community got even more isolated trying to get, uh, safety vehicles to that community if those, uh, bridges are compromised. So I have a proposal here. Uh, been working on this for about a year and a half. Um, going to the meetings in the steps for local, the county, the legislators, uh, ODOT, and finally Governor Brown's office. She referred me back to ODOT. ODOT says, "I don't have money." And I think this is a critical point in our neighborhood that has been overlooked very, very long time. So I'm here to present the pictures if you'd like to see them.
Thank you. You can give those to Brenda over there.
Thank you very much.
We'll take a look at them.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Please.
I know we usually don't, uh, make, uh, responses, but Ron, thank you for being here. I know at SCATS last week, we signed, uh, a letter. I represent us on the, uh, Salem Kaiser Area Transportation Board. We signed a letter at SCATS in support of a pedestrian bridge. So we're, we're aware of it, and we're working on it, and it's gonna be a long-term project, but just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Okay, next up, we have a presentation, um, regarding the Strategic Economic Development Corporation, SEDCOR, and their, uh, quarterly report. Good morning, Adam.
Hi. Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Franco, Community Services Department, Econo Development Specialist. Here to introduce Eric Anderson and Nick Harville of SEDCOR. Uh, we have a five-year contract with them that is paid through for...
Is it on?
Uh, yes.
Oh, there we go. Great.
Uh, we have a five-year contract with SEDCOR, uh, funded through lottery dollars, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year. And they're here to get their quarterly update on their work they've done this, uh, this quarter.
Good morning, Eric.
Good morning. Um, Eric Anderson with SEDCOR, um, Nick Harville with SEDCOR. Thank you for, uh, seeing us this morning.
Oh, it's on the PowerPoint. Yep, the one down below.
Oh, sorry. I guess I need my glasses more often than I realize.
I actually was just thinking that myself, you know.
Squinting, yes.
For myself, not you.
Well, I certainly gave out all the signs of someone who can't see in front of me, so thank you. Thank you for having us here this morning. Um, I think, I know you folks know what we do and who we are, but for other people, the, you know, our, our role is leveraging public and private partnerships that we have to grow, retain, and attract high-value jobs and capital investment in Marion County and the counties we serve here in the Mid Willamette Valley. Our informal mission is that we know a guy or know a gal, and we still use the out-motived, uh, example of a Rolodex. But, uh, we all are very proud of the fact that we have, uh, uh, very diverse and big Rolodexes, and, um, people can Google that if they need to do the explanation of what a Rolodex is. I thought we'd start first with the Saniam Canyon Recovery, um, efforts. Um, as I think everybody knows, one of the, um, most important parts of our, of our work is the other, um, other responsibilities as required. And certainly, uh, uh, fire recovery, wildfire recovery was a major, um, undertaking for the community, communities. And, uh, we're very proud of the work that Nick, leading, uh, has been doing with SEDCOR and our partners in the canyon, so Nick.
Um, it's been my honor to, uh, good morning, Commissioners. Um, it's been my honor to be on the LTRG Executive Committee and work with a great group of people. As of last week, it was reported that the case managers have eighty-eight cases now, down from a hundred and fifty, which is great. Doesn't mean that there's only eighty-eight houses left to build. There's probably three times that many. In regards to that, on Friday, um, we're interviewing a gentleman to take the position that we've created for a construction liaison to work with people. These, the last few people will probably be needing more help than anybody has so far. And his job will be to help them through the permitting process, help them, help them through the process period. And we think we have a really good candidate. He'll be excellent, I think. As you can see, we're still building the sheds, and, and that's been a great partnership from the very beginning. When Troy told me about the, Troy Goldstrom from Mahama Church told me about his intent to build these sheds and what could we do to help, about twenty-four companies, including the Saniam, um, Rebuild Coalition stepped up, came together, got enough materials for a hundred sheds in May. They're, um, gonna have a celebration, uh, because they will have done by then a hundred and fifty sheds.
That's so cool.
Excuse me. Yeah, it is. It's really cool. And instead of building them at the Mahama Church, Marv Shettler from, um, gosh, mine just went blank, from Blazer in, uh, Almsville, stepped up in his property in Staten and offered it to the Shed Build Group. And that's where they've been building sheds for the last year. Um, Marv's for the party in May. I guess Marv has actually offered to buy pizza for everybody, which, that's something else. Recovery is progressing. I met with Chris Eppley last week, and we discussed the canyon. Coincidentally, this last week, I've had conversations with people about a couple of different businesses, potentially up in the canyon, um, which is really encouraging. But there's a long ways to go, even after two, after two years, there's a long way to go.
Before you go on to the rest of your break, would you, uh, if Friday is successful with the liaison, would you have them connect with myself and Matt in our office?
Yep.
And then if it's, uh, not, would you let me know?
Yeah.
Uh, I think what I want the public to know is there's several hundred homes that need to be built, some from scratch, some from partial, some from, you know, remodeling perspectives. And it's exciting to have one person come, but we need more than one person to move this along. We're working on some funding that's coming our way from the state that will be able to help those individuals. And there's a timeframe on those dollars to be spent. So we'll also be reaching out to, um, the Home Builders Association to see if there's anybody there. Erdman probably knows a few folks that wanna lend some, um, of their skill sets. You know, there's, it's a hard thing to do if you've never actually built a home, from developing plans to a septic system, to a water system, to building permits, right? There's so many components. And it can be a very long process if somebody's trying to do it with no skills. And we really have to expedite. Aside from the fact that we're, you know, two and a half years out from the fire, these people wanna be home, there's gonna be kind of a time of the essence situation with funding, so. I'm excited, I'm excited for Friday. I'm not gonna hold my breath, but it's a big job. It's a big lift for anybody. So however we can help him or her, that would be, that would be my ask. And I, we talked about this yesterday, so I know the board, the board's fully behind, uh, this effort.
I'll make sure.
Thanks, Nick.
It's nice to be able to see the finish line. We're not close to the finish line yet, but we can see it.
Yeah.
And for the last three years, you know, it's like we're just climbing up that mountain, hoping that someday we can see the finish line. And it's, it's nice to be able to see it, to articulate it, and then now we just have to execute.
Yeah, just a visual of like what's to come. Before, it was like, oh, there's this dark hole that we have to try to figure out how to get to, and there's literally light shining on a lot of projects to see the communities recover. So while I'm passionate and invested in this, I may be not as amped up about it as I was six months ago, because we're finally getting some real, real traction with recovery. There are a lot of people getting into their homes that, you know, it was just like this last thing. I, I haven't gotten an occupancy certificate report from Public Works in a while, but, um...
We should, we should get one.
Yeah, usually they come, come every...
Next, this week, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm sure it'll be great. And I just, SEDCOR is doing such great work to help facilitate all of that. It's really kind of maybe outside the scope of what you do, but it shows that we know a guy, we know a gal.
Exactly.
Mentality, which has really been so helpful.
Well, and to your point that it's a difficult process, I mean, you don't even realize how much, how many different pieces there are in that process.
Yeah.
And the kinds of calls that Nick and his colleagues are getting as far as some real specificity on, "We don't know what to do about this, this, and this." I mean, you, you realize that that hand-holding and that, that role is so important.
Yeah.
We, we, I put a picture of the, of a home that, uh, was, I think the keys were turned over to the owner in December, you know, over two years after she was, uh, lost her, her home, but that was, uh, donated and built by Adair. And that's just, that's just one, and we know there's a huge need out there, but, you know, you see the kinds of, of, um, commitment that the Home Builders Association members and the SEDCOR members and the Construction Alliance folks have done with this. It's a, still a real labor of passion and love, which is really nice to see for all businesses in the community.
Chris Eppley is actually working on a report. I forget who's, who's, you know, commissioning that report. We had a hot talk about it yesterday. And, um, there's this whole section that you're gonna redo, uh, and the efforts that made us successful. And I think talking to Nick would be really helpful, because I didn't know about the Adair component. And I think that's critical to what, how you do a recovery like this right, um, is the message we're trying to send. And we, there's lots of missed components in the original report that we looked at. So we're gonna, Chris is gonna work on redoing that to make sure we incorporate every thing that we can get our hands on as far as knowledge.
Well, that, that role of an organizer or helping to organize, I mean, the number of calls that came immediately, I mean, hundred, over a hundred businesses, just trying to figure out how they can help and how to coordinate all that and to catalog those and who's got what and make those connections. That is a real important part of this.
Yeah.
Sorry, we interrupt your presentation. Keep going.
Okay. No, please, ask questions and, and provide comments. Um, on the business retention expansion aside, there's kind of a couple examples here of projects that we're working on. You know, first is, uh, we had a good meeting, um, with the Assessor's Office, and we went out to visit the folks at Open Dental here in the Salem, South Salem area. Three hundred employee dental software and call center. And, uh, they're adding a new building to their campus. The really notable thing about this is they're dedicating the first floor of it to, um, daycare for their employees, which is the kind of thing we're certainly trying to encourage. So that's, um, so I was happy to see that the county, um, Sarah, the Assessor's Office, um, you know, I was a little nervous that we were gonna end up having to say, "Sorry, the state won't let count the jail, childcare space as part of the incentive." But, uh, um, we're very supportive of that, and it's just kind of the example of what people are trying to do to keep, keep their, uh, valued workers and attract new workers. You heard a little bit, uh, when we met previously with the folks from, um, Metal Innovations, but they did get their lease at the Salem Airport, um, and, uh, so that project is moving forward. I don't know, Nick, if you have any updates on that or just, uh...
Well, they made the purchase of the building and then got the lease from the city of Salem. There is an aircraft right now in the hangar, and as a result, um, they appreciated their time with you Commissioners. But as a result, there could be some potential additional positive developments from them moving from Aurora to Salem from another company that wants to become involved. Now that they have, now that Metal Innovations is gonna have more room, this company wants to get involved. And it's a very old aircraft company that has been around for many, many years. And it's not based in the United States.
Cool.
Yeah, very cool.
Here's to hoping.
Yeah.
And so, so when you realize the domino effect of this, both for the Aurora Airport, 'cause now there's space for businesses up there to expand, and then, you know, Salem Airport with Metal Innovations, I think it's an exciting opportunity for us to really spend some more time on the aviation industry in this area and to really see, you know, what we can do to help support them and also how we can make the, these processes, these projects go a little more smoothly in the future, 'cause, you know, we're, we're identifying the bumps in the road too. And Nick, I didn't know if you wanted to comment a little bit on the aviation piece of this, 'cause that's, uh, Aurora.
The aircraft you see there at the bottom is electric. The state of Washington is scary.
That's what I was saying.
Just keep cranking.
See where the recharge station is up there?
It's a very long cord.
Refuel and air.
The state of Washington has done a substantial amount of work on aviation, uh, to the re, recharging stations, where they're gonna be parked, 'cause they have to park to recharge, do you use changeable batteries? So the batteries are charged instead of, you know, like you do a car, um, just change the batteries out, give it fresh batteries and send it on its way. And how those are gonna connect to the major hubs, um, because they are short-distance and smaller aircraft, I think. This one originally flew in Moses Lake, Washington earlier in twenty twenty-two and has been the centerpiece of electric aircraft ever since. Uh, you can look it up on YouTube. It's really pretty interesting. But a group of the businesses around the Aurora Airport asked me to attend, and I think Matt was invited to attend also, a meeting with the state of Washington to hear what they were doing and how we could tie Oregon airports in with what they're doing. I know the city of Salem has already marked out a charging station, um, out of the Salem Airport. So, you know, everybody has mixed feelings about flying an electric aircraft. But I think it's probably the way of the future, and we could position ourselves to capitalize on this whole thing pretty well.
Great. You don't have to be the first to go, Kevin.
It's always important to be the second to go.
I'd be happy to. You've got a long life ahead.
He's still raising babies.
I got life insurance, though.
I was thinking that, Commissioner, when I left my house today, I go, "There's nobody in my house." How many were in your house this morning?
Uh, there was seven.
Yeah.
The trick is making sure everybody feels loved on the way out, 'cause if you miss one, then all day, there's resentment building up.
Oh, sure, 'cause their attention spans aren't like this.
Couple updates on the recruitment side. I know we've been talking about the Dollar General or before that, um, project, uh, Justify for a long time. I, I do feel obliged to say, though, and I may have mentioned this here in this venue, January twenty nineteen was when we first got contacted by a site consultant looking at a west-coast wide search for an appropriate site. We did not know who the company was. Um, the project has changed, you know, several, several, uh, times over the last four years. But, uh, actually, coincidentally, I was following up on a conversation we had, Nick and I met with Representative Deal, and driving down Turner Road and seeing, um, uh, lights and activity at the Dollar General site in the fog a couple Fridays ago was really, was really nice to see. So the site work has started. We're hoping to, um, they do have plans to have some type of more formal groundbreaking, so certainly we'd keep you folks up to date on that as we find out about it. Um, we've offered our assistance in trying to put something together for them since we're here. But the, the picture on here just kind of shows the, just from Skennell's perspective, the developer out there, what they envision for that piece of land in the south part of Mill Creek. And that, if you look at the, kind of the top part of it noon, if it were o'clock or midnight, um, is, um, the Dollar General site. It's, um, at this point, a hundred and forty million dollar project. It is in the queue for the enterprise zone. I don't expect they'll be hiring people until twenty twenty-five, I would guess, but, uh, they're saying five hundred workers. And, you know, the one thing we keep promoting in this is that it's dry goods, you know, it's a nine hundred thousand square foot facility, which includes cold storage. So our opportunity to get local produce and local products in there for their west coast or northwest stores, I think is, you know, we've been, we've been pushing that all during the conversation. And, um, Commissioner Willis, I think you were there when they did their kind of soft announcement with, with us. You might recall that their, one of their VPs was, uh, calling in because he had to go meet with the governor of Virginia to try to get Virginia products in their stores, so, you know, I'm gonna remind them of that.
Good.
Up in the kind of upper right-hand corner, that square facility is, uh, also moving forward. We, we still don't, uh, um, don't feel like we can say the name of the company, but we've talked about that a little bit. It's a, um, HVAC, um, warehouse and distribution facility, notable for the fact that forty percent of that space will be allocated or dedicated to manufacturing as well. So it's nice to see some manufacturing coming in there. And, you know, we always talk about the supply chain and certainly around agriculture and, you know, adding value to what we grow. One recent business that has looked at a couple of different sites in Marion County, one in Salem and one in Woodburn, they're in the server business. They, um, work on servers for the data center industry. And they do not have a facility, um, in the northwest, and they are looking at, um, they feel there's obviously enough data centers around, but that would be, um, some really good, sort of, not necessarily highly skilled, but they would be technician-type jobs and probably very well-paying. Um, so we're hoping that they, uh, take the next step with at least one of our sites. I know when they toured, they looked at three sites, the third being down in Medford. But, uh, that was a supply chain we didn't necessarily see coming, and I was kind of relieved that it wasn't a data center.
Me too.
So is it a server, uh, manufacturing plant?
Um, mostly reconditioning or, or, uh, service. So they would have, basically, the, the data centers and other businesses would send their servers in. They get fixed, and then they get shipped back out again.
Okay.
And, you know, data centers, um, we haven't had that many of them in this part of the world.
They're best made for the desert, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, when I was at Pacific Power, both Facebook and Apple, you know, that's, that was where my learning curve was. And, uh, I'm just seeing how much power they actually do use. It's, it's a, it's a commitment of a community, really, to look at that kind of capacity going to that. So this, this would be a couple hundred jobs potentially, so it's, you know, very different than that sort of data center, uh, reputation.
'Cause there's some jobs at data centers, but it's not like the same sort of where you're training people up and giving them...
Yeah.
Just making sure the lights are on.
I worked as a technician over the summers in, in a fab, and those are good-paying jobs.
Yeah.
You know, like, the great thing is, like, the folks that, a lot of folks I worked with didn't go to college, and they were making north of thirty dollars an hour. I mean, it's like really, uh, and you get really good skills, and it's, it's, it's a really good opportunity for, for people to find good work, you know.
And, you know, we, they, I knew that was gonna be important to them. We, we got that, you know, input. So we were ready to, as soon as they give us job titles and, you know, got classifications to get those numbers up. One benefit that we do have in, in this area is that we really can pull from, depending on the job, three different labor sheds. You know, we look good already as the mid-valley, which, you know, from a labor perspective includes Albany and Lynn County. But when you add Corvallis, and we can kind of take in some of the OSU, um, job classifications, and then the south part of, uh, the Portland metro area, um, you know, we're very competitive in that regard to, to Portland.
Happy to always compete against Portland.
And, and just a few things, sorry, there's a lot of text on this one, but a few things we're doing around the innovation entrepreneurship. We talked before about our small business technical assistance grant that we got from Business Oregon that we're working with the Latino Business Alliance on. We're just about to finish up the first group of, uh, ended up being thirty, um, entrepreneurs that went through the whole process of at least ten hours of training. That group will continue to be facilitated in kind of networking sessions and then be, also being trans, uh, transferred to more one-on-one counseling with the Small Business Development Center. Chameca SBDC has, um, also augmented its staff to have more Spanish language, uh, resources available, which is, has been really helpful in this regard. We are about to, next Friday, week from, say, Wednesday, week from today, uh, we, we launched the second cohort. There's kind of a kickoff meeting, and, uh, I think we're over, we're close to sixty so far that have signed up for that. So it's, um, and we learned a lot from the first round, so we're, I think we're a lot better organized going into this next, next round. And here, the Angel, uh, Oregon Angel Food Twenty Twenty-three, we can... And here, the Angel, Oregon Angel Food 2023, we can now announce that it will be hosted in Marion County. We're getting this one from Portland. Last few have been centered at the Red Building on the central east side industrial area, and we brought the Oregon Entrepreneurs Network folks down and toured Shemeka's ag complex and just seeing the indoor/outdoor space there and the accessibility to I-5, so we can draw from, you know, central Oregon, southern Oregon, and, and the Portland metro area easily. We're very excited about this. In 2022, this program resulted in a competition, a pitch competition at the event, and they had four finalists that competed for a $300,000 investment in their business. So.
To make angel food?
Yeah.
All right, I mean, I'm all about it.
It's, it's, yeah, it's Oregon Angel Fund, so this is, this is a pun.
Okay, that's fun.
But is this specific?
I mean, can I go and just sample it?
Is this specific to food, businesses?
Yes, food entrepreneurs. And the, and answer to your question, Commissioner, yes. That's the part where I was talking to Adam before we started, that we're excited about the opportunity. There's a marketplace component to this. So being able to have businesses compete, or at least readying them to compete, if they have a product that's ready for the shelves or on the shelves, but also, you know, the, we're going to be really working hard with Travel Salem and other folks to really attract, you know, locals that want to see what's made here and sample what's made here, and.
Does angel food pair well with wine? Because I imagine you'd get a lot of people if you marketed to wine people.
I will comment that the one in Portland, at least, you know, I, I think one thing I learned having gone to it last year is that they needed more, you know, substance, because there were lots of salsas and sauces and lots of cocktail additives, but not necessarily what you need to complete the meal. So I think.
Don't drive after that event.
Commissioner Cameron needs to go get some consulting.
Yeah.
He's our go-to food guy.
I ate turnip nash potatoes last night.
So we're excited about that. I think that's going to be something that we all can get behind, and we all, this is something every corner of our region has activity in around food manufacturers. Speaking of which, Sedcor is a partner with Oregon State University on their strategic plan around a Center for Innovation Excellence for food and beverage industries in the state. And early January, we had our first roundtable with several local businesses, just to kind of hear what their innovation needs were, where there are gaps, where there's opportunities. OSU is preparing for its report to go in, and then we see where the legislature goes with funding these Centers for Innovation Excellence. It's somewhat surprising that Oregon does not have something that's food-centered, the Food Innovation Center in Portland, but we're excited to see OSU kind of really stepping up in this regard. And we're also really happy that they see Sedcor as a, kind of a partner for, for testing some of their theories with our manufacturers here, because they know the relationships we have with the food and beverage folks in the, in the region. And I also do want to put a plug in, I didn't include it on here, but the Sedcor is hosting our ag breakfast. We had one yesterday morning in Mount Angel, as we talked about. Tomorrow, it's at Iola Campus in Polk County in West Salem. I think we, we're getting close to 125, which is the maximum for, for there, and we had over 125 yesterday, so. And one of the featured speakers was our partners from Memphis, Tennessee, from Ag Launch, that are kind of announcing where we go with our five-year program that's funded by the SBA for our industry cluster around ag innovation. So it's going to continue our work in that regard. And he was here to talk about just, you know, Nick and I were talking earlier, how excited he is to be in a place where there are so many diversity of products being grown and different commodities here, because he's coming from a place where it's corn, soybeans, and cotton, and tens of thousands of acres. And, you know, to have roughly 200, you know, available to do different types of things with and look at different technologies is really exciting to them. And it was pretty cool to see a map of the United States with, up in the corner, Sedcor as, as one of their key components on, as a partner in this. So there was only a couple of these funded last year, so we're very excited to be a partner with them on that.
Cool.
And if, and I think, Commissioner Willis, I think you're on the line for tomorrow, perhaps, for breakfast?
Yes, I'm coming, I'm coming.
Good, you'll get to, you'll get to hear and meet Pete Nelson, and hopefully you'll see where, how we're excited about it as well.
I was worried that you were saying I was presenting tomorrow, and I was like, we're going to have to have a conversation after this.
Oh, he didn't tell you?
That was not on my agenda.
Kevin and I are the ones that can pivot immediately. Colin's more of a planner, so I've been like, okay. He's like, nope.
I thought we saw you on the list, that's all I was saying, so. And not on the presenter list.
I'm sure I could, I could adjust.
Just come in and breakfast and listen, that's great.
I'm feeling great about that.
Okay, good. We appreciate you being here.
That's awesome.
So that's all we have. Happy to answer more questions or get input, feedback.
I don't have any questions, I'm just glad for the work that you're doing.
Happy for the support, so thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Cameron.
No, just, I need to follow up with Nick on an email he sent the other day, so.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, it's good. And I love seeing the pictures of your dogs, by the way. I miss my assistant.
They're my assistants.
Thanks for all you do.
Thank you. We have quite a few canine assistants in our office.
I bet you do.
Thank you.
Nice to see you both.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we're going to go into our consent agenda.
It's me. I don't know.
I'm happy to do it. I move to approve the consent agenda under Board of Commissioners, Board Committee Appointments, Local Alcohol and Drug Planning Committee. Approve orders reappointing Raymond Wilson and Chloe Frost to the Marion County Local Alcohol and Drug Planning Committee with terms ending February 1st, 2027. Under Board Committee Appointments, Solid Waste Management Advisory Council, approve an order reappointing Joe Fowler as a business industry member to the Marion County Solid Waste Advisory Council with the term ending February 1, 2027. Under Finance, approve a quitclaim deed for tax account 543638 for the sale of a tax foreclosed property back to Lois Hassing, the prior owner of record.
I'll second the motion.
The motion is second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay, and next up, we're going to consider approval of the American Rescue Plan Act beneficiary agreement with Isaac's Room, the amount of $250,000 for the replacement of lost revenue incurred due to the COVID-19 pandemic and expanding youth opportunities. Good morning.
Good morning. We'll do quick introductions and then we'll get started. So Debbie Gregg, Grants Manager in the Finance Department.
Camber Schlag, Contracts and Procurement Manager in the Finance Department.
And Tiffany, we have a guest speaker today, so.
Tiffany Bulgen, one of the founders of Isaac's Room.
Welcome.
Great, so, yes, we're here for you to consider the Isaac's Room beneficiary agreement. So just as a quick recap, Marion County was directly allocated over $67 million in these American Rescue Plan Act state and local fiscal recovery funds in June of 2021. And the purpose of this is to help support local governments in responding to the economic and public health impacts of COVID-19, and in our efforts to then contain the impacts in our communities and local businesses and not-for-profits and residents. So Isaac's Room, as many other not-for-profits, has experienced negative economic impact due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Excuse me, they experienced revenue loss due to multiple factors, business closures, and then also limitations on their fundraising event. And so Isaac's Room is requesting 250 in ARPA funds to help mitigate that revenue loss that they sustained during the pandemic. We presented their application to the Board of Commissioners at management update on January 10th, and so you have the agreement before you today to, to approve or the ARPA, excuse me, beneficiary agreement. And then this is an allowable category under the ARPA category of assistance to impacted nonprofit organizations. And so Tiffany's here to kind of explain a little bit about the funds of the use and the, and the mission of the nonprofit.
Yes, thanks for having me. It's good to be here. It's fun to get out and get my head up a little bit, and it was really cool to hear Sedcor's presentation, so grateful for your work for us. So, you know, Isaac's Room has been in the community for over 20 years now. I'm actually literally Isaac's mom. So Isaac's Room was founded through the loss of our first son, Isaac, and also doing teenage parole probation boy foster care in our 20s. That's a story that would take a long time to explain. But we have given the last 20 years to youth ages about 16 to 21. We use the term divested, so they come to us for some reason, that there's no qualification, but a lot of times they're either on parole probation, in alternative school, or, you know, just haven't found their purpose, right? And especially over the last few years, you guys can understand how that need has not gotten smaller in this community. So we help divested youth build the capacity to face the challenges of life. So we take that very critical transitional age, they enroll in our program that we call IQ Quest. They take a quest with us, and we do all sorts of things. It's very holistic. It includes working out, it includes eating dinner together, it includes class with lots of key components. But the real central part to it is giving them a job. We take kids that have been person B. Have you ever heard, person A helps person B, and person A gets better, right? So they've been person B, they've been the receivers, they've been the, the thing, the somebody that needed help, and they've been given services and, and all of these things. And we've realized through our experience, and also through some other nonprofits that we have looked up to, that you got to get them in person A situations. You've got to get them being the helper. And that's where they really start to see their value, and they start to understand that they can be givers in our community. And a job is a great way to do that. And, you know, the IQ Box has been around for 17 years, and then luckily, we finally opened our second location, Isaac's, January of 19.
That was bad timing.
But one of the beautiful things about opening the second location is not only did it double our capacity for jobs, but it gave the back-of-house skills of cooking, of cooking and baking, instead of having to be out front as a, as a barista all the time. And with a lot of our youth, it was really great to diversify those skills. Isaac's has done tremendously well, and one of the beautiful things about our model is a social enterprise can actually help fund your organization. So not only are we providing these jobs to these kids and giving them these skills and helping them be confident givers and taxpayers, but they also, the, the profit from the business goes right back into the program. And in 2022, after two years of COVID and all that, we believe we'll be giving back about $65,000 to $80,000 in revenue from that, from Isaac's back into our program. So I think, Commissioner, you were at an event where, you know, the next door became available at Isaac's, and our kitchen has gotten too small, and our bakery has had to shrink, and we haven't been able to offer as many opportunities. And so we are expanding Isaac's, and with your help through this ARPA fund, we will be able to add about 10 to 15 jobs beyond what we're doing currently down there. And obviously, in our grandest dreams, also provide a lot more funding to our organization. So a big part of this money will go to that expansion and those job, those job opportunities. We will also be providing more entry-level positions, more prep work, because our menu will be expanding, more dishwashing shifts, because there will be double the capacity for seating and groups to gather. And so that's a big part of it. The other, another part of it will go to actually expanding our program. And as we expand the ability to serve more kids and do more things, obviously, some of those funds will go to help fund our coaches and our, and our people that are running that program. So if you have any other questions for me, I'm open to that.
That's great. Any questions?
Mr. Chair. Thank you. Probably not a question, but Tiffany, it was great to hear you say the B and the A. And I, I realize that, you know, the two best days of our lives is the day we're born and the day we figure out why.
Yep.
And that A part is like the why for those kids. It's like, wait, I can help somebody else here get better.
It's magic.
Yeah, it is, so it's great. It's great to hear you define it in an A and a B. How'd you say it?
Person A helps person B, and person A gets better.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the truth of the universe, isn't it?
They figure out, they figure out, hey, wait, wait, I have a, I have a purpose here to help this person, so thank you for the work you're doing.
Yeah, thank you.
And looking forward to seeing the grand opening of the new facility.
Me, too.
Do you ever have your kids read the book, The Four Love Languages?
Um, you know, we've been around a long time, we've done a lot of things. I, I'm sure love language, I don't, they have not read the book, no. There's a lot of concepts from lots of different books that, that we read.
Yeah.
Like get into the program and into the, into that, but no, but that's a, it's a good, it's a good one.
It is a good book. I think the, I don't have any questions, because I think this is a fantastic program that didn't exist when I was a divested youth, the youth in this community. So I think being able to interact with these kiddos, which I do regularly, because I spend a lot of time at IQ Box and meetings, they're learning how to establish their own love language. And what I've found in most of them, when they're starting to ask me questions, some of them have gotten to know me, they really look for that service to others, you know, their love language is serving, and it fills their bucket. And they really love to just like, you know, they'll ask, how's your day? I just, there's a new gal over there that I just, last week I didn't notice her before, so maybe she's not super new, but I order, I order a tea with, with coconut milk in it, and she was like, really? And I was like, yeah, coconut milk's really good for you. And then we got in this whole dialogue, and she was like, who are you? I was like, I'm a nobody, I just like coconut milk. But she learned so much, and the next person behind me was like, what kind of tea did she order? And then she just delivered this whole, like, message of healthy bodies and tea's better for you than coffee, and we have this, you have like 18 varieties. Anyway, I just love watching them perform, and I'm thrilled that these dollars are going to be able to help you stabilize and expand. That's what we want to be doing here, is, is, I believe as a county, is making sure that we invest in opportunities for folks to really live their best life in Marion County and the county to benefit from it. Anytime you can get a kid a job, they're not receiving from the system.
Right.
And they're living a more fruitful, healthy life. It's, there's just so many components to the success of this. And we can go to Isaac's eventually to grab a table, because right now it's full all the time.
Yeah, you'll be able to make reservations in the other side, so.
Oh, you probably shouldn't tell many people that, because the spectacle will fill up fast.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, thanks for being here and for the work that you do.
Thank you.
And thanks to you two for navigating all the things that we're pushing at you. It's, I know it's difficult with the changing rules, but you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
This was an easy yes when Commissioner Bethel brought it to us. I don't think we had to, we had to think too hard about this one. But something that I, that I said before is, you really can tell how good a community is by how they treat the kids in that community, right? Because the kids are like the least powerful.
Mm-hmm.
They don't have lobbyists, they don't have money, they don't have, right? So it's a reflection of the goodness community, of the community, how, how they treat their kids. And I've always admired your work with Isaac's Room. And I think about how it's sort of the multiplier effect, kind of like your person A gets helped by helping person B, I think of how much the community benefits from Isaac's Room. I can't tell you the number of different types of meetings, the number of times you go, oh, let's go to Isaac's, or, or let's go to the IQ Box, just because it's a pleasant place. So not only are you helping these kids, but you're also like creating a pleasant sort of communal living room for everybody in the community, right?
Beauty, coffee, and stuff that really does.
Yeah, it's really.
I guess these kids around people that they just wouldn't normally get to.
Right.
Have interactions like that, you know? And that, that is a real big part of what we've noticed in doing that. It's, it's, it's really cool. And expanding to Isaac's just gives us even more of a different look at different types of customers, and, yeah, they get to interact with them, and they look at them and say, man, that's really good, and it's amazing. They haven't been told that's really good very much, so.
Yeah.
But, yeah, healthy, healthy communities need invested, invested growing young people.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yeah, for sure. I had a friend call me yesterday, and I had, a while back, he was in transition, like a couple, several years ago, and he was thinking, I was like, well, this is a really good place, there's really good people here, like you should think about, you know, the Mid Valley. And he called me yesterday and said, you know, when you said that, I didn't really understand what you meant, because I was like, well, there's good people everywhere, right? Like, okay, there's good people here. And he's like, but now I think I kind of get it. Like, there's just a.
We have different people, we have different good people.
Yeah, so anyway.
Very committed.
Thanks for, yeah, thanks for the nearly two decades that you've been doing this work.
Thank you.
It's really been a blessing to the community.
Appreciate it.
Okay, who's, it's Kevin's, Commissioner Cameron.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve the, of the American Rescue Plan Act beneficiary agreement with Isaac's Room in the amount of $250,000 for the replacement of lost revenue incurred during the COVID-19 pandemic and expanding youth opportunities through December 31st, 2026.
I second the motion.
The motion is second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.[1787.88]
Aye, the motion passes. Thank you, Tiffany.
Thank you. We're gonna actually grab a photo really quick with Tiffany so we can do a press release on this.
Let's do it.
Yeah.
When Commissioner Bethel says it, we do it, right?
Um, well, you know. I'll stand back here, huh?
Just come down here. Get down here.
I can't probably walk today.
That's a good thing. Tomorrow you will. Have a banana.
Lots of water, Kevin.
Have a banana.
Have some pickles.
Have a banana. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last off.
Thanks, yeah. Thanks. I won't drink too much.
Oh, no, it's my, it's all swats I've been the last two days. It's my, uh.
Are you guys gonna do a, I saw people working down there. Are you gonna do like a groundbreaking or anything?
We didn't do a groundbreaking.
Are you gonna do a ribbon cutting?
He did that open house.
Will you do a ribbon cutting?
Yeah.
Could you make sure we get an invitation?
Oh, sure. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Austin, you're up now. Look at you.
He's like on it.
On it. I appreciate that. Why don't you introduce yourself and, and, uh, let us know what we're doing here.
Definitely. Good morning, Commissioners. Austin Barnes for the record, Marion County Planning Division. Um, today we've got a simple one. We're considering the final adoption of the administrative ordinance approving zone change slash comprehensive plan change, ZCCP twenty-two dash zero, zero, two for Jason Fussner. This is going from acreage residential ten acre minimum to a two acre minimum. Um, the Marion County hearings officer held a duly noticed public hearing on July seventh, two thousand twenty-two, and on August eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, the hearings officer issued a report recommending the board approve the request. The board held a duly noticed public hearing on the application on December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, considered all the evidence in the record and approved of the request. The ordinance and findings have been prepared and the notice of adoption was given on January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three. The administrative ordinance is now set for formal adoption. Um, the commissioners have the, um, options to adopt the ordinance as written, direct staff to prepare a modified ordinance, or choose not to sign and adopt at the time. Recommendation is that the board adopt the ordinance approving ZCCP twenty-two dash zero, zero, two as written. And I'll stand for any questions you guys might have.
Thank you, Austin. Are there any questions?
No, he said it was easy. He's not wrong.
As I recall, this hearing is pretty straightforward too. Yep.
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is the one that I think legal counsel said we could read by title once.
Yes, if anyone agrees.
Oh, you're throwing a wrench in my motion. So ready just to move it.
So you would have moved, so, so, sorry. Jane, so the, the motion would be to adopt the ordinance as written. Is that right?
Yes.
That'd be the first motion.
If you're gonna, um, so under the county code, if no commissioner present a public meeting objects, the administrative order should read it by title only.
So, um, if nobody objects, you'll read it by title only. So, uh, you don't need a motion for that.
I just need to read it by title.
You just need to read it by title.
Okay. Is there anybody who objects to me reading this, this administrative?
Can we make a motion that the, the chair reads it by title only once?
You can make a motion, yes.
You can make a motion. Okay. Why don't you make that motion?
I make the motion that the chair read the title, the motion by title. Twice or once?
It's not an emergency. I'll second the motion.
Here, your motion to second. Is there any further discussion?
No.
Seeing none of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. So I'll read, uh, this ordinance by title only once. In the matter of the application of Jason J. Fussner. Okay. And I'll take a motion to approve the ordinance.
I make, I make a motion to adopt the ordinance as written.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion?
No.
Seeing none of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Great. But I wanted to just clarify, do we need the second motion?
It's not clear, but I think just to be careful.
Well, you're making it muddy then.
What?
You're making it muddy, folks.
I just like to be careful.
All right. Well, we're.
No, it's, it's not you, of course. It's always these ordinances. No, it's not you either. It's like.
It's those attorneys, you know?
They're the worst. They're the worst.
You know what Jane might be helpful in the future is if in their, whatever they, this board packet, um, they have their one, two, three options. There's like a little parentheses that says, if this occurs, they do this.
Yes.
And then they can guide us and we're just reading it verbatim.
Perfect.
They could even just email them that language.
All right.
Can, can I just comment on attorneys are the worst? We're the worst until you need us.
That's right.
I used to, I used to be an attorney. I didn't, I didn't actually, I was supposed to be self-deprecating.
I was clarifying him. I know he was trying to make fun of himself, but.
Yeah, she is right.
You gotta have attorney presence.
Thank you. Have a good day.
It's always the, the opposing party's attorneys.